Hello, hello. Good evening everyone. Welcome to the DeKalb Planning and Zoning Commission meeting this Monday, March 4th, 2024. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Becker.
Here.
O'Flaherty. Penney Graham.
Here.
Stoker.
Here.
Wright. McMahon. Maxwell.
Here.
For present.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda, Stoker.
Move by Stoker. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Penney Graham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll go to the approval of the minutes from February 20th, 2024, the same. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Becker. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stoker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. If there's anyone that has anything they would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, you may step forward now. If not, we have one item in new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by Rivermist by Granger LLC, represented by Brian Granger, to amend the ordinance 97-36 and 97-37 to allow for a 55-plus residential community in the villas at Bridges of Rivermist on approximately 35 acres along the north side of Bethany Road between Sagamon Road and Tigert Lane. I understand we have a presentation by Mr. Granger. Would you like to step forward and just tell your name and address and feel free to give us the overview?
Hello, my name is Brian Granger. And thanks for having me. Excited to maybe can stay back a little bit. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited to be here in DeKalb, so with Villas of Bridges of Rivermist. So thanks for coming. And I will, I have a lot of information, so I'll try and go through that quickly, but if there's questions, then we can maybe circle back, so.
Sure.
A little bit just about me and what we do. I know the print on the screen is a little bit small, so we can get information for anybody that would like it after the meeting. I'm from DeKalb, born and raised here in DeKalb. We started in business 1995, which is about 29 years ago, so I'm older than 30 now, but approximately 700 homes, condos, townhomes, we've built in the DeKalb County area, so I think we've built more than anybody still doing it in the area now, so. But in 2013, we started doing the retirement communities, so I just wanted to run through a few of those. Maybe you're familiar with some of them, but 2013, we started the Somerset Farm Community in Sycamore. 17, we did the Hickory Terrace Retirement Community, so also in Sycamore, a little bit smaller than Somerset Farm. We did several communities in Genoa, the Riverbend Condos and the Genoa Independent Townhomes. Those are still underway in Genoa. And just finishing up the Old Mill Park South in Sycamore, and we have broken ground in Old Mill Park North. So we've been doing this for about 10 years now, specifically as it relates to age-restrictive communities. So a little bit about the communities, just the highlights. You know, it's a commitment to quality, what we do, Anderson Windows, you know, maintenance for exteriors, you know, it's important when association's going to maintain everything. Unique landscaping throughout our residence, are highly focused on landscaping. A couple of exterior renderings of some communities that we currently are doing, this is a plan that we're doing in several of the communities, similar to what we would be doing here with some of the homes. Some smaller townhomes that we also offer. These are closer to 1,100 square feet, again, all brick, you know, very nice homes that offer a little bit smaller footprint. On the inside, again, custom cabinets, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Breaker, but it's a family-owned, very small, high-quality cabinet shop. Courts tops, all solid millwork. I'd love to invite everybody out to our model home just to see what we do. I think we did have quite a few people come out from the community to see our model home, but still, there's many people that haven't really seen what we do. Big thing is resort-style showers, really large walk-in showers. But just a few interior images to give you an idea, this is more of a traditional style, or this is a little bit more of a modern, but again, they're custom-built plans, so people really design the units to what their personal design, you know, is, or what's important to them. So we do modify floor plans, change cabinets. Going through here, so showers are really significant, the whole main bedroom suite, large shower, sometimes tubs. About 25% of the home is going to be the main bedroom space, so I want to show you a few images here. Showers, about four-foot-by-nine-foot shower. In the main areas, botanical garden spaces, here's some pictures from one of our communities, a lot of focus on landscaping. If you look at the image coming in, there's a fountain, so that's really a fountain about the same size, it would be in front of the clubhouse as you come into the community there, so. Whoop, went too fast. So here is a highlighted area, just to be clear where the community is, so that's the curve of Bethany Road, and that's the Phase 5 of the Rivermist community. Same thing there. Then here is the site layout, so it's kind of small on this screen, but let me see if I, so this would be considered the main entrance, so it is a gated community, so then this is kind of a loop street. What we see in our other communities, what's really nice with the loop street is that people can, kind of, it's like a track, you know, it's kind of a closed loop, and we would see this as a secondary entrance or a non-primary entrance, but people, you know, really like to walk and just kind of, typically quiet streets, not a lot of activity, and it's a safe place to walk. So then here you have the clubhouse, botanical garden space, pickleball space outside, so you know, we can come back to see if anybody has any further questions about this. So this is the dog park here on the south, and then this is where that walking path would then be extended, you know, along Bethany Road to the school there, so. Couple clubhouse images in the lifestyle community, that's really a big part of it, having a central amenity. Clubhouse, this shows the indoor pickleball space. Now, this is designed for a separate community. In Rivermist, we envision actually two indoor pickleball courts, will widen out this end of the building a little bit. Just wanted to touch on a few of those amenities there, so approximately 8,000 square feet, and you know, part of that is because pickleball courts are fairly sizable. Botanical garden spaces, outdoor games, of course, as I mentioned, pickleball, large club room with connecting, outdoor entertaining area, a library, you know, it's more of a kind of quiet space, book clubs and things like that. It's a lounge, billiard tables, gaming tables, a fitness center, of course, with your weights and machines, and then yoga or group fitness studio. A flex space, you know, can be used for other things, crafts as well, and then, of course, an office space for the activities coordinator. And then this is just a floor plan, so again, that's something that I could get for you. This is another community that we're doing, but very similar to what we would do, what you have, let me see if, whoop, there we go. Yeah, this is an indoor pickleball space, so this is what would be about twice as wide to accommodate the two spaces, so. But we can circle back to that if there's any questions. As far as who we would envision in the community, what we see in our other communities is very commonly a family and friends, you know, moving closer that are, you know, age-qualified. We've had a number of residents in Rivermist reach out to us saying they, you know, really excited about the idea of being able to downsize in their community and be able to still stay with their neighbors and their friends and, you know, their community that they're used to. But, you know, in DeKalb right now, there isn't really a space like this, so when people want a lifestyle community right now, they leave DeKalb, and I think this is a great opportunity to keep people, you know, retiring in DeKalb, from DeKalb County and DeKalb City, but then, of course, we're always hoping to attract new retirees to DeKalb, so. Projected timeline, I wanted to touch on a few of the questions, people had submitted some questions, so I wanted to go over some of those briefly, but here we talk about timeline. We would hope to, you know, be able to work through an approval process here this year, and then assuming that goes well, next year, then we would be able to start doing development work, you know, the sewer, water storm, streets, and then probably 2026 now is when we would envision actually being able to have people move in. And the velocity, you know, that's always economically driven, but we project that at 10 to 20 units per year, so there's always a lot of factors. Density, some people have brought up some questions about density, so I want to touch on that. When we met with the association, we talked about, you know, proposed density, what to expect. In our other communities, it's typically about six to eight homes per acre, so, and talked about, you know, working through that, you know, as part of land plan. So at that time, I was thinking around 250 homes, and this is the same slide that we looked at at that time, but in working through the process and hearing some of the people's concerns as far as multifamily, we introduced the idea of doing single-family homes to kind of buffer the multifamily, thinking that that would be kind of a nice transition, and so that did cut the density in the community. Of course, it raises costs, but it, so that takes it to about 5.4 to 6.3 units per acre for the total homes of 224 homes, so. As far as the, anytime you reduce density and increase costs, and so we, you know, mainly what I've heard from people is two things. Some people are upset because the homes aren't affordable enough for local people to purchase, and I hear from other people that are upset that the homes, they think, won't be valuable enough or would devalue the property, but I think, I think that really what we're doing is really a nice, you know, kind of blend of those two concerns, so. So next item I want to touch on, and this is one that's been brought up in some kind of letters, how will 55-plus community affect existing values? Of course, we've been, you know, working alongside of single-family homes for 10 years, but we found the 55-plus communities, you know, raise the average sale price. Now, there's kind of a reason behind that, but for someone to touch on, there's approximately 25 remaining lots. We also think that that's going to kind of limit the supply and drive the demand of those remaining lots, but construction is synergic, so people see construction, it creates excitement, it creates more construction, more development opportunities. But as it relates to values, I wanted to talk about the sale prices, and these are some things that I had shared with the association when we first talked, but our base price in our current community starts about $324.9 to $434.9, depending on basement, location, things like that. Now, final sale prices, you know, range a little higher, more like $350 to over $600 is our current closing, so. Now here in Rivermist, we hope to offer some pre-construction pricing at just under $300, so, you know, a starting price with a two in it is really what we hope to achieve, and it is more difficult than it's ever been, but how we're doing that is the same way as, you know, around the United States, we're seeing the size of homes is shrinking, you know, in the United States, it's smaller homes and to help manage costs, so. But with a smaller home, you know, the actual building cost for the sale price is about $272 per square foot, so getting back to values, that's really higher than anything right now, you know, selling in the Rivermist community, so. The median sale price over the last 12 months is a little bit over $400, about $410, but if you look at those single-family homes, lots that are proposed across the way, so those would be same design standards, including square feet, there would be no chance of delivering those 1,900-foot ranches at $410, you know, it's just not possible, so. I've never seen an instance where a community is built at a higher price point that pulls down the value of the surrounding properties, so. But next, just a little bit more about the kind of the HOA guidelines, and we had spent a lot of time with the HOA in a number of meetings presented to the group, and, but landscaping was important to them, they wanted to make sure we maintained the same landscaping standards that have been maintained throughout Rivermist, which is, you know, it looks very nice, you know, they've done a nice job as an association. But landscaping, we do irrigate the communities, it's especially important when somebody's looking for maintenance-free roof pitches. For a ranch home, their requirements are a little bit higher than 812, but we would also do it in 812 with the exception of like, if there's a screen room or something, predominantly 812. Big thing that they wanted was masonry, except not a masonry front that's going around the building. If you look at the communities that we do, they are masonry, so they're high-quality, very nice homes. Square footage, of course, that's the whole concept of downsizing, is that the square footage is less, so. 1,100 to 2,000 square feet, they did put a limit on how many homes we could do under 1,200, so, but we wanted to be able to offer multiple floor plans so that we could reach as many price points and as many local people as possible, so. Some of the benefits to existing residents, I think one of the things that's really positive for the association, and I think that many of them understood this, is of course, changing the 55-plus community increases the HOA projected revenue over 20 years by about $3.3 million, and again, that's above if those were built out of single families, that's additional revenue, so there's a financial advantage to having more people paying the fee. But also, what we see in other communities that we've done, it eliminates the uncertainty, you know, that's inherent when you have incomplete subdivisions, so when something isn't done, what's going to happen? You're cutting the grass, or people are dumping things there, it finishes things through, and it, uncertainty is never positive when somebody's, you know, considering the value of a property across the street. But just strengthened, DeKalb as a whole creates jobs, supports the local retailers, retirees or, you know, baby boomers specifically, statistically have the largest percentage of the wealth in the United States, and so they're great consumers, they're great people to have in your local economy. They go to restaurants and commonly shop locally, so they're very good for the economy. But I want to move on to traffic, you know, in the community, and then also somebody brought up school safety. So I did bring my engineer with too, he could talk into the details of traffic if you'd like that, but with 85 single-family homes, the average, average single-family home is about 10 trips per day, when in a 55-plus community, it's a little over three, 3.08. So when you look at 224 homes compared to 85 single-family, the actual traffic is over a 10% reduction to do a retirement community. That's a very logical question, more homes would logically mean more cars, so I think the logical question is why? Well, retirees on average, they drive less, but they don't like to drive in the dark, they tend to drive less in the dark, don't like to drive in the rain, don't like to drive in the snow, they're more sensitive to traffic patterns, really that means, you know, peak rush hour. You know, what we see is, you know, you're not going to plan your day to leave at 5:00, you're going to go a little sooner or a little later, and statistically, a lower occupancy load, so. I think I missed a button there. Yeah, and that's, I know I went through that quickly, but I wanted to have a lot of time for questions or you guys to speak, and I'd love to answer any questions that you guys have, or should I turn it over to Dan?
Yeah, we'll go to a staff report right now, and then we have several people that have asked to speak, so.
Yeah, and then if there's anything else, I'd love to come back up and delve into any more detail or any questions.
Sure, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I'll go through the staff report, not trying to repeat what Brian mentioned, but what is being proposed, I'll just back up to the site plan, is amending the couple ordinances from 1997 that approved the preliminary plan for the subject area here, and I did have a slide for that, it's in your packets also. It's a little grainy, but this is actually 1997, this was Bethany Road through here, and they had some neighborhoods, it was actually multifamily called for back here, and some single-family, kind of a mixed land use in 2008, which I'll mention too, they did approve a Phase 5, a single-family development the city did in this subject area, that was in 2008. It was never planted, obviously never developed, that was when the housing crunch hit, so it never went forward after that. So that's the amendment to the preliminary plan, that's why we were having the hearing. Brian went through, the PDR zoning stays the same, we're just amending the preliminary plan, this will be the new preliminary plan, they will be required to come back with a final plat and final plan, going through the commission and city council. The plat will create the lots and do the recording, record easements, et cetera. The homeowners association, Bridges of Rivermist, there's a letter from the association president of the board noting on May 8th, 2023, the HOA voted to amend their covenants to approve the project and ultimately to sell the project to Mr. Granger. So it's under contract, owned by the HOA, the letter's provided to you. Brian went through the history of his developments in Sycamore and Genoa. The preliminary plan itself, actually there was an annexation agreement approved that expired in 2016, but allowed a variety of units in that area, up to eight dwelling units per acre, but they're proposing 6.3 dwelling units per acre, as noted. 224 total units, the lot sizes, they have a single-family along the south side of Larking and also east side of Comstock Avenue. Those lots will be 60 by 120, 7,200 square feet proposed. As a comparison, lot sizes across Larking Avenue on the north side range from 10,400 to 13,400. They're about 80 by 130, so 20 feet wider. He's trying to do a transition from the single-family to the more multifamily or condos down here. On Comstock Avenue, those lots are a little bit larger, there are more depth to them because there's a 50-foot landscape berm, landscape screening easement actually along the back end of the lots for those, so. That's just a little comparison of the size of the lots in that area. Brian went over the size of the, and the pricing for the units and the square footages. The plan itself would be private streets, there'd be two access points, as noted, one here off Larking, a security gate is proposed. The plan does show an emergency access-only gate here, discussions with the fire department said engineer, we're recommending that be a full access and a security gate is fine, but we want a project this large, there should be two access points into the site, so, and the developers agreed to that, too. And there'll be a slight rearrangement of the roadway here, the engineers are working on to kind of better flow into the site, but two access points into the subject property. And mentioned with traffic, Brian put up the slide showing less traffic, that is true, there's more traffic with a single-family home with teenagers than 55 and over. And let's see, the schedule went over, approval this year, 2024, 2025, the improvements would be going in, and the first units, clubhouse in 2026 are the part of that year. And bridges right now, it's been slow since '08, '09, it's about three to four homes per year are built there. There's about 25 vacant lots remaining, so there's still demand, it's a little slow, but that's going on, so it would be quite a time if it remains single-family for that area to be built out. And Brian went over the dues, how those would work in the HOA. Utilities are available around the site, it's already annexed to the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. There is a small parcel here, you can see that little notch there, that's actually owned by DeKalb Township, and it's not in the city, so Mr. Granger has contacted the township and is trying to purchase the property to make it part of the development, so. We do have the comp plan, of course, we approved in 2022, it meets many of the goals of that, particularly providing housing for all stages of life, so residents don't have to leave the community as their needs change, so that was one of the big things in the comp plan. This is a need in the community, this type is senior housing, 55 and over, and we think this is an appropriate site for it. There's other provisions or other goals, objectives in the comp plan, it's meeting, it's not annexing new property, it's already annexed, so we're not expanding out further from the corporate limits. They're adding, extending the bike path, existing, going around here up to connecting the existing one on Sagamon, so that's also called for. And many of the urban design guidelines for residential is being met in terms of aesthetics, masonry on the commercial buildings, et cetera. Public input, we did receive quite a few emails, a few came in after the agenda was posted on Thursday, so I'll just mention those. In support of the proposal, we had, of course, a Bridges of Rivermist HOA letter, also in support of the request, Greg Davis, 399 Larking Avenue, Gary and Pamela Peel, 320 Kingsbury, Marshall and Jody Dirks, 3447 Owens Lane, Paul Barnaby Jr., Bridges of Rivermist resident, Gary and Holly Greshel, Bridges of Rivermist residents, and since the agenda was posted, Blake and Donna Borthwick, 3423 Bearbu Lane, hopefully I get all these names right or close, Greg and Stacy Kubitz, K-U-B-I-T-Z, residents of the Bridges of Rivermist, James and Alexandra Daley, 312 Quinlan Avenue, and then Brian Schrader, who owns a vacant lot on Comstock Avenue, was also in support of the request. Those who do not support the request, Tom, I'll spell it, P-I-S-A-P-I-A, 3263 Comstock Avenue, John Hamilton at 3275 Comstock, also Sandra and Donald Jackson at 315 Larking Avenue, Douglas and Jane Matson, 275 Quinlan Avenue, and finally, Brian and Michelle Oling here, who live on Rutland Road, those people objected to the request. There's a sample motion shown in the staff report, approves amendment to the preliminary plan with 22 single-family detached home, 19 six-unit townhomes, 22 four-unit townhomes, as shown on the plan, approval of the plan, that's Exhibit A, and then also a couple of renderings were shown that are part of the approval, too. Exhibit C is the development standards, its permitted uses would be of 55-plus, restricted development with the density I noted, with accessory uses, including the clubhouse, dog park, indoor/outdoor pickleball, botanical garden, there will be no swimming pool, that was near in the staff report, and associated uses. Bulk regulations per the PDR and SFR2 district standards in the UDO. Also, we added fences for the single, for the perimeter of the site, would be allowed up to six foot, they may want to have a security around there. For the single-family homes, though, on Larking and Comstock, those would be per the UDO in terms of fences, so no change there. Again, as I mentioned, the final plan and final plat would be submitted and reviewed again by staff, the commission and city council. Conditions, I noted the two full access points into the development. Final plat should note the subdivision subject to covenants, as described by Mr. Granger, and the one-acre township parcel that should be annexed in or excluded. township parcel, that should be annexed in or excluded from the plans as they move forward, but they plan on getting titled to that and annexed into the city. So that's the staff report, happy to answer any questions, we have Zach Gill, our city engineer here, too, in case there's any questions on those related issues.
Thank you, Dan. We have several people that wanted to speak on this matter, I'm going to take them in the order that they were received, Brian Shirley, if you'd come forward and just state your name and address.
How are you doing, Brian?
My name is Brian Shali, my wife Sheila Pralad, my son Grant Gorall are here, I live at 4, excuse me, I live at 455 Quinlan Avenue in River Mist, we are here to speak in opposition to changing the existing plan, that's really what we're opposing, to a 55-plus residential plan of Phase Five River Mist. When you look at the proposal, to start, it does not appear to petition or answer the questions or the reasons for the request in item F, C, D, and E, it states that the proposal, that they have found 55-plus communities have raised the average sale price of surrounding homes, but offers no evidence or proof source to back that claim. It also stated without any proof source, that generally, construction activity has a bandwagon effect. As to the detrimental effect, it answers that 85 single-family homes would average 10 trips per day compared to 250 proposed 55-plus condos averaging 3.08 trips per day. Where did this information come from? We can only assume speculation because there is no proof sources. There are other claims made, including the possibility of an underpass that would allow golf carts to travel under Bethany Road, down a path that would need to be built, and cross First Street, and tie into the bike path that is currently run by the Park District that does not allow motorized vehicles. So there's a lot of claims being made in this proposal that just are, can't be done. In my view, before allowing this development to move forward, the city should do its due diligence and complete a study of the effect this project would have on existing home values, traffic congestion on Sagamon and Cutler, directly across the street from Gwendolyn Brooks School, whether or not stop signs should be added to the corner of Cutler and Sagamon, and a stoplight at the corner of Bethany and Sagamon. Further studies should also include the effect of high-density older population would have on police, fire, and hospital services. When we purchased our home, we did not expect a development of this type, there are already high-density townhomes west of Sagamon, everything west of Sagamon behind Gwendolyn Brooks School is all high-density townhomes. Is it necessary to add this density, especially when it's going to surround Gwendolyn Brooks School? How will the traffic patterns change on Cutler entering into Phase Five? What will happen to the green space that the residents on Larking and Comstock enjoy viewing with such high-density condos being built on Phase Five? When this development was proposed to the membership, it was not stated that 22, the now 22 lots would be shrunk in size from 13,000 to 14,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. Minimum square footage on the home built on those lots on Larking and Comstock is 1,900, from what I understand. Again, green space is being taken away, why was this left out of the proposal that was voted on by the membership of the HOA? I believe that those lots should adhere to the conditions of the HOA, and the lot size should remain at 13,000 to 14,000 square feet if this development is approved. The original plan that was approved in 1997 is sound and should remain. The prior owner of this property was required to pay association dues for the projected 85 lots, this cost restricted him from selling and building on those lots, as a lien was placed on the property for non-payment of those dues, it also restricted the HOA from selling Phase Five to a developer unless those dues were waived. Those dues were waived in this contract with this developer, why can't this developer now build on the original 85 homes? Where does he show a need for a 55-plus community? I believe a more thorough study of this project must be performed and acceptance be granted, before acceptance be granted. Existing residents who live in the neighborhood along Phase Five deserve a full report on the effects of this project will have on their neighborhood before any approval is made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Sandy Anderson. Again, if you would just be so kind as to state your name and address.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Sandy Anderson, I am thankful to not only live in the Bridges of River Mist at 537 Quinlan Court, but also be a citizen in the city of DeKalb. This project is proposed, and to me is extremely dense compared to the original plans, the proposed, the proposal alone almost doubles what we have in Phases One through Four. It seems like we're trying to squeeze into a 35, about a 35-acre parcel, where it just, the petitioner has stated that additional 224 home sites approximately will actually decrease traffic count, and from what, 85 single-family homes? I just don't see where he's getting this statistics, I would like to know, I find it a little bit hard to believe, I'm not sure where the information came from, but I would appreciate some expert looking into this to give us consult, whether this is a true understanding of that. The petitioner also says that the value of existing homes will increase, and the bandwagon effect will happen. I lived through the 2008 economic downturn, and I was involved directly with single-family residence home building in the northwest suburbs, it was devastating. Without going into a lot more detail, I think I'd have to see some documentation on this, I'm requesting that we be able to verify this. It may increase the value of the newly-developed units, because as the petitioner states, people are downsizing, we're also seeing people leave the state, which greatly graves me. But it's going to be a gated community, apparently, with a clubhouse, and I guess the pool is no longer in it, which we were both in the understanding there would be possibly a pool, but those of us who are in Phase One through Four do not have any ability to access that, we're not even given the opportunity to pay into a passport for the summer or to use the clubhouse with any payment, nothing has been offered to us, as far as I know. So if someone were to choose between a larger existing home without the amenities, because the pickleball, I think it sounds great, I know the Y has it, I know that Northwestern has that also at their amenity, I would think logic would tell you, yeah, they'll probably pick the newer unit, but is that going to negatively impact the existing homes in Phase One through Four, and will it cause them not to have as much of a resale value? I don't know, I'm just asking. So, the other things that concerned me were that the people on Larking and Comstock will be most affected during this 10- to 20-year period, there will be many things affecting our neighborhood, the entrances, the exits, also the school area, but there's so many unanswered scenarios that I think need to be addressed. Instead of, this project will change the neighborhood dynamics forever, and I would just question whether it's been really vetted before granting them the right to build it. For tax purposes, the petitioner says this could take 10 to 20 years to build out, so that says to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that the tax increase is going to be incremental. So, three or four homes are sold now, or if even 10, as he's suggesting, are we really gaining anything by changing it to a multifamily project? What happens if the developer cannot sell as he's predicted? What happens if he cannot finish the project? How can we verify that he has the necessary wherewithal to pay for the infrastructure that is needed? In my view, this may be a bigger gamble than we want to take, the HOA has decided to waive the lot fees for this builder until the lots are developed, have we even looked into other developers that might want to take advantage of that now, that those fees are no longer going to be assessed and they're not going to have a lien or be sued for that? Mr. Granger has built 55-plus developments, he's got one on Bethany Road, just east of Peace Road on Barbara Green, is that fully developed and occupied? How far along is that? How much of that has been developed? Is there more room for expansion for that? Will this be competing with the River Mist plans? Are the Genoa and Sycamore 55-plus properties fully developed and sold? Do we see synergy there? Is the developer able to add another project of this size if the others are not fully developed and sold? I went by the Sycamore one, and I was shocked personally, that it wasn't developed more, because he started it, I believe, according to the website, in 2019, and we're in 2024. Now, that one's unique in that it doesn't have residential single homes right budding up to it, it has large, you know, a large fields, and then, of course, a school, I believe it's a junior high school, so it's a whole different scenario. So, I just, I just want to ask if we could have due diligence here, since he took advantage of the three due diligence clauses that were given to him in the contract, or I should say in the amendment, where he was able to utilize three different times, which he has twice, that there was a three-month delay, 90 days, so that he would have due diligence, I'm just asking that we maybe could exert that here, that we could really look at this, look at this project, and look at the potential for possibly financial hardship on the single-family members, and ultimately not benefit the city of DeKalb's tax base. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. The next person is Grant, am I correct? Grant, is it Gorall?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi there, sorry, I'm a little bit taller here, my name is Grant Gorall, I live at 455 Quinlan Avenue. The proposal that I'm going to be talking about for the security gate part, to introduce the security gates along Larking and at Comstock Avenue, brings forth a series of logistical concerns that I think planning and zoning should address. While city staff have recommended two full access points without emergency gates for efficient traffic flow, I think the current proposal does not have that without the security gates. And having security gates that are open during the day and close at night not only raises safety concerns, but also introduces unnecessary complexity to the neighborhood's infrastructure. Security gates, especially those that limit access at specific times, can impede emergency response times, and in the event of an emergency, like a fire, quick and unimpeded access is paramount. According to reports by the National Fire Protection Association, gated communities with restricted access can pose challenges for emergency services, potentially leading to delays that could have life-threatening consequences. Additionally, the notion of a gated community, if not manned, can foster a sense of exclusivity that runs counter to the open and inclusive characteristics of single-family neighborhoods and the city of DeKalb. This could have social and psychological impacts on the overall community cohesion, and I think it's opposed to the belonging to DeKalb motto that we've been told to embrace by our city. As far as the traffic is concerned, I think the proposal, proposed development to generate the 10% less traffic than previously approved, single-family detached homes warrants closer scrutiny, especially considering the potential increase in density and the extended 10- to 20-year timeline. Traffic studies consistently indicate that construction activities can significantly impact traffic patterns in surrounding areas, and especially, I think they're going to move the construction traffic right next to the school to avoid going through the neighborhood, so I think that's something to consider as well. Moreover, the claim of 10% reduction in traffic compared to single-family homes demands transparency. I would just like to say, too, I know in the comprehensive plan, they're talking about, it checks off some of the points of creating all stages of life, you can live in the community at different ages, but I don't know if this density in this 55 and over is best placed in a single-family neighborhood within walking distance of a school. We're building a lot in DeKalb on the south side, I think we're trying to expand DeKalb and grow DeKalb and bring more population into the city, and does it really make sense to take up what could be future single-family homes near a school? That could be single-family, younger people who want to have children and want to be by a school, I know for myself, in the future, that was something that would be ideal, and if I did build in the city of DeKalb, it would be in that area. So it doesn't really show a vote of confidence to me to see the city or the Planning and Zoning Commission say, "We're going to plot a 55 and over in a prime area right next to a school, where younger families that the city is trying to bring into the city might build and might be discouraged in the future if they see a vote for this," so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorall. And lastly, we have, I'm not sure, is that Dale Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Dale Anderson, I live at 537 Quinlan, my wife just spoke a moment ago, she was also, or she is also, on the board at River Mist, so. I received an email this afternoon from a homeowner who asked me if I would deliver the message that he had during this presentation, so I said I would. He said in his email, and I'm just reading it verbatim, "My family lives on Rutland Road, which is in close proximity to the proposed new development by Brian Granger. We adamantly are against this development for the reasons below." And then he states seven reasons. Zoning consistency, some of these are a bit redundant from what you've heard before, but I'm going to just add them as emphasis. "The zoning commission would be setting a precedent for further deviation and eroding the integrity of the zoning plan. The property has already been approved to be developed as a single-family residence area. With the HOA now conceding that they will not be collecting HOA fees on vacant undeveloped land, more developers will be attracted to the property which was not the original intent." Somebody said something like that earlier. "The current proposal does not have clear architectural standards to maintain a cohesive look within the zone." The second one, first one is zoning consistency, second one is community character. "The proposed development will disrupt the existing community character as single-family neighborhoods prioritize low-density atmosphere." Number three, traffic congestion, and I certainly agree with this one, "The increased population will lead to undue heightened traffic congestion. Bethany Road and Sagamon are already accident-prone areas." Number four, quality of life, "The change in the neighborhood dynamics will affect the quality of life for existing residents. The introduction of condos will forever alter the peaceful and family-oriented atmosphere we chose when we originally bought." Property values, "There's a distinct risk that property values for single-value homes will decline. There needs to be a study done on this before moving on." Privacy, this is the sixth one, "The close proximity of the development will disrupt the sense of personal space we shared when we moved here." Number seven, communication and transparency, "We have a lack of transparency on this, there's just a lack of it." I personally have asked for some of the contracts, and they've just said unequivocally, "I can't see them." Nobody can see the contracts. People have asked for transparency on this, and I'm not sure that we're getting transparency. But, this person says, "The builder has made changes to the original proposal with the addition of single-family homes on reduced lot sizes." So before, there were to be no single-family residences, and now there are. So before, there were to be no single-family residences, and now there are. Before, there was to be a pool at the clubhouse. Now, there's no pool. And one of the things that I was interested in was some of the amenities at the clubhouse. And we don't, we don't have access to any of those amenities at the clubhouse. None of us do. And the single-family lot size has changed to six to eight per acre. That's a lot. So that is the conclusion of the email, and I can just say that I think somebody needs to reflect on this and, you know, just do some more studies to figure out for sure, are, are we going to end up getting hung out in this community? Are we going to end up getting hung out? Check on some things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. If there's anyone else that would like to speak to this? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up for comments and questions from the commission.
Well, I, I do have a couple of questions, and a couple echo some of the questions of a rot word by people who maybe not stand in opposition, but certainly have queries. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Am I on? Am I on? Okay. There we go. I apologize. So as I look at it, beautiful presentation, but I, like several of the people would ask, I'd like to know the statistics behind some of the assertions. For example, the, the traffic flow. Where, where does that come from? Secondly, your comment about, you know, as people downsize, they would flow into that. Where inside and outside do you anticipate those coming from? Is the basis of the population of the 55-plus resident in Kalb large enough to support 200-some-odd units? I'm assuming that the single-resident homes or the single-family structures will also be 55-plus exclusively. Is that true?
Yes.
My, my biggest issue is, I guess I would like to know more, you know, I, I see, I see the tada effect, but I'd like to know the statistics behind the tada. As I said, where, where, where does the, the impact that, you know, the statement about increase in valuation for the, the current single-family homeowners come from? Where, where will the 55-plus community come from? I think, from that perspective, I, I think it's a beautiful concept. But how do we support it? We look at some of the communities south of Lincoln that are still underdeveloped, single-family neighborhoods that are still underdeveloped because of the downturn. Do you have a game plan, should we suffer another 2008, that we don't have, you know, a desert there? I'd like to know a little bit more about that. Can you answer any of that right now, or is it something you need time for?
Go up to the mic. Brian, up to the mic. Take to the podium, please.
Yeah, we, we can answer, I think, all those questions now. It seemed like there was a lot of questions about traffic, as I had mentioned. My, my engineer is here, and he deals a lot in traffic studies, and I think he could speak to that. If, may we go ahead and have him come up and talk about traffic?
Certainly, please.
Yeah.
Very quickly, I'm Kevin Buggy, owner of CES Engineering. Been in the county for 40 years. I've been doing designs in this city since 92, so 32 years now. We've done a lot of work around here. Basically, the Institute of Transportation Engineers is the national organization that are the gods in, in traffic studies. They produce the Bible that we all, all use. Highway Capacity, Highway Capacity Manual and the associated software is what we run on our computers to generate traffic. And then there's the Trip Generation Handbook, which are books we all have on our shelves as civil engineers. All the nomographs, charts, equations you want to, you'd ever want to see for traffic of different types of developments. Single-family housing, commercial, apartments, retails, this kind of big box. These, any potential traffic generation that you can imagine are in these books. That's where these numbers come from. I tend to look at four different pieces of traffic when I'm looking at the, for insight on the impact of any particular site on the regional traffic. That would be the total traffic in a weekday, the total traffic on a Saturday, the total traffic on a Sunday, and the total peak hour of a weekday, which is what most people worry about, when they're trying to get out of the house, get to work, or get to school, that traffic jam. So it's three daily numbers and one hourly. The total traffic on a Saturday, comparing a 55-plus community to single-family homes, the number that, of homes that was proposed versus the number in this particular development. Total traffic on a Saturday drops by 24% based on this plan. Total traffic on a Sunday drops by 10% when you look at this plan. On a total weekday, overall, it would potentially raise by 1.5%. Again, the numbers are rounding errors at the 1.5%, but that's total traffic on a weekday. The peak hour on a weekday, which again is the rush hour we're all concerned about, drops by 60%. This development would most likely have 29 cars in that peak hour leaving the development. If it were single-family, it would have 72. 55-plus just aren't in a hurry to go anywhere at 7:30 in the morning, or they've already done their 5:00 AM coffee shop. But they're not competing on the roads with the people that are trying to get to work and get to school. So their daily traffic is just greatly expanded and averaged. But again, in, we look at all four of those windows, anywhere from 1.5% increase on a total day to a 60% decrease in the most important hour. And again, these, all we do is run the numbers. But the formulas and the charts and the nomographs and the studies are done by the Institute of Transportation Engineers via the software they sell and provide and the books they provide. And there's, matter of fact, I shared this with Zach just, I don't know, a week ago or something, just so we'd have it in paper as well. But there's, we can't be more transparent than showing where the numbers come from. And I can assure you, people may not like it, but I can assure you, traffic drops with these communities, even going from the number of units that was proposed to this number here, because the 55-plus just don't go, they don't drive much. The average single-family home moves their car in or out 10 times a day. Five, what we call trips, five total trips. So 10 total movements. That's the average single-family home.
Zach, you're our city engineer.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, if that bears out, Zach.
It does, yes. And I, there will be a full traffic study that needs to be submitted to me and approved by me. I have no definitive opinion on this. I don't care if you build it or not. That's not what I'm here to do, just so you know. I look at the numbers. What Kevin has referenced is correct. All traffic is not equal. Peak hour is often what we look at the most, right? An office store, McDonald's, don't have the same peak hour. Everyone's going in at 8:00 AM. Everyone's going to McDonald's at noon to get a, get a hamburger, right? So its peak hour's not the same, similar to the cohort of population that would, would live here. So it does follow even kind of some common sense, right? When you think about what these people are desiring to do, leaving their, their domicile is going to be considerably less frequent. But again, we will look at the complete traffic study. Any negative externalities will need to be addressed by the developer before it gets my approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, yeah, I think, for me, one of the important things is to be able to provide backup, because I think that does help to satisfy the concerns of the people that are going to be most impacted by it, the neighbors. The other one that I was questioning was the implication that it would actually have a positive impact on homeownership values in the single-family residents in the other parts of, of the community. Where did you put that together, the statistics behind that?
We're, of course, we're, we're doing this in a couple other communities, and in fact, one of them is a similar situation, where they had kind of a, an abandoned phase or a phase that hadn't been successful. And, and then it was, it was changed into a 55-plus. You know, this is, this was, you know, I was in business back in 97 when all this was happening, and, and so it, it's hard to believe we're still talking about it. But, but in, in the communities that we build, what, what we're building, on average, is, sells for, for more than the surrounding homes. And so the economy has been strong, you know, home values have been strong. So I don't think you, you can say for certain that the home next door would have sold for this if, if we built this, or you can't go back and have a, a case study where you see what that home sells for if we didn't. But I, I can just tell you that the homes have, have, have increased dramatically in value. Much of that is due to the, the lack of certainty as far as what, what would be there. When you have a, a development that's kind of just abandoned, you know, really, which is, is what is there, you know, things aren't quite finished, and it's just kind of left, it's clearly not done. It's, it's a negative reflection. You know, when somebody buys a home across the street, you, you don't know for sure what, how it finishes, when it finishes. And, but the, the value of, of what we build is, is frankly just higher. You know, in fact, I wish it, I wish it could be less, to be honest with you, but it's, you know, we, we do build a high-quality product, meaning all masonry, large millwork, Anderson windows, and, you know, I can go on and on. But, you know, hitting a, a lower price point, as much as we'd like to, it's, it's difficult. So, so when you see, you know, 1,600-foot ranch selling for more than the, you know, 2,400-foot two-story across the street, you think, geez, it sure seems like there should be a little bit more if that smaller home is selling for this price. So that's, that's what we've seen. I could touch on some of the other things, too, that were brought up. Did you want me to do that?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there was a lot of things. I did think the association was going to speak, or is, is the, is the board not going to speak today? Somebody came up and said they were on the board. But, but the, you know, kind of going back, you know, there was a, a number of meetings and opportunity for everybody to vote, and it was overwhelmingly, you know, in favor of this. Of course, it wasn't unanimous, you know, so, but, but there, there was...
For my own, Brian, for my own notification, what was the, the numbers on the vote, if you don't mind my asking?
It's in that letter from the association.
184 to 53? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so I, I think that, that, you know, I, I came and did a number of presentations and, and answered questions like this, some of the same questions we're getting today. And I don't know, maybe they haven't moved to the community yet, or, or weren't able to come to those meetings. But it was, it was a pretty, the, the association board handled it well in, in that there, there was a lot of opportunity to weigh in. But back to traffic, too, I was just going to put, somebody brought up school safety, of course, reduced traffic is, increases the safety at the school as well. The, somebody brought up a cart path that was not anything we talked about or proposed today. So that, there was something that was early on, you know, something that, that we had hoped to propose, but that's gained no traction, so that's not really pertinent to the meeting today. Let's see here. Somebody brought up the concern over the 2008 crash, which, which I, I think most people here are old enough to, to remember that, and no, no residential properties were immune to that, but 55-plus was less affected. And at Somerset Farm, something that was very unique, when we went there, is that zero association fees were behind, you know, zero foreclosures in, in the community. Something that attracted me to 55-plus is a high level of equity. You know, we have a lot of cash buyers. Very little foreclosure happens in 55-plus. So it's, it's a very stable market, you know, you know, good credit and strong equity. So it, it really, I think if any, anything adds stability to a community. But access to clubhouse amenities, I know a few people brought up they wouldn't be able to use the clubhouse. Of course, the, the people in the condo or the age-restrictive community pay a, a fee, you know, to, to use that, and, and a cost. So of course, you know, we're, we're building a clubhouse that will likely be over $2 million that is built into, to that process. So, so it, it really wouldn't be fair to, to say, even though you, you didn't pay into this, you can just use it anyways. But, but also, there's just, you know, everybody pays the fee to take care of the clubhouse, pay the insurance, you know, coordinate the activities, cut the grass, you know, run the irrigation. It's, it's really not, not the same as, as a health club down the block or something like that. This is a, this is a 55-plus lifestyle community, so. But somebody had brought up at, at the meeting, if there would be a way that they could use the clubhouse, and, and I, I said, "They just have to move into the 55-plus community, and then you'd have an opportunity to use the clubhouse." So, and then somebody just talked about a lack of transparency, and I felt that we were very transparent in the process with the association. We had a, a number of open meetings. And, but, you know, certainly, you know, you know, as we are today, whether it's traffic or, you know, whatever, kind of an open book as far as, I, I don't think that's fair to say. And it seems like people maybe don't like the idea of the single-family. I, I thought that was a positive. We actually reduced density. I thought that was a great way. The initial thought was to have multifamily, you know, up to the edge, and then I thought, well, it may be nice to buffer, to buffer that. So that, I perceive that as a positive, but, you know, the plan could be amended to, I mean, it, it actually helps to lower the cost per unit a little bit, because it would, it would likely allow for a little more density as far as more condos or something. But that was kind of the thinking behind that. When we first met, we were thinking more at 250 homes. And like I mentioned, when I was going through my slides, by going to single-family, it, it reduces that, but I just, I thought that was a nice transition, so. See, how is Somerset Farm doing? You know, good. That sold out 2018. The demand is high, the units sell quickly. It, there seems to be a, a lot of demand for, for this type of, of product, not only here, but across the United States. And Illinois is a tougher state to, to retire in. So I, I think that it's important that we put our best foot forward, do everything we can to, to keep our retirees here, because more people, you know, retire away. I mean, that is something that we're up against. So however, we, we continue to attract retirees here, you know, and people to find value right here in our community. But we need to provide an environment that, the, the most important thing in, in the home buying experience, especially 55-plus, is a feeling of safety. So, so that's, that's first and foremost. You need to provide a, an environment that they feel safe. And that's a lot of the, the whole site plan, everything that we do, that's the primary focus, the feeling of safety. There was a lot of things, different directions there, as far as tracks. Somebody talked about gated entries and stuff. Of course, we'll work with the city engineer on that. And was there anything else you wanted me to speak to right now? And I could come back up again.
One, one of the questions that one of the young men had asked, had mentioned was ingress, egress by emergency services. And of course...
And of course, we may not like to have to admit to it, but being in that category, the likelihood of an ambulance coming into the property is, on a pretty regular basis, is there. How, with it being a gated community, how do you provide for immediate access should they need to be in?
The, I can answer that. The, what they showed was a security gate here, meaning it would be locked all the time. We objected to that. They want a security gate, that's fine. The police and fire will be provided, transponders, so they'll be able to get immediate access. We do have a few of those in town in some apartments, and I know Self-Storage has something like that. So we'll be able to get access right away. And they'll have to work that out with the city on the plan before our final plan is approved.
Great, okay.
We didn't want emergency access only where it's gated 24 hours and you couldn't get through there without Knox box or something.
I have, we have comments about the gates in general. I mean, to me, it's bizarre. You don't have an access off of Bethany. The only access is into the neighborhood, so you're protecting yourself from your neighbors. I don't understand why you need gates.
Mm-hmm.
And do any of the other communities that you have, you have gates?
We do not. We do not.
So why this one?
Well, it's something that the retirees like. So if you look at the areas that are doing a great job of attracting retirees all through the South, there's hundreds, maybe thousands of gated communities. So sometimes they're gated upon gated even. So it wouldn't have to be gated, but it is something that our, you know, our buyers perceive as a positive. You know, if you've ever traveled through Florida, they're very, very common.
That's Florida, that's DeKalb, Illinois.
And you're not entering off of Bethany. Like, I mean, literally, it looks like you're trying to shut out your neighbors.
You want to, to me, I'm thinking about it, you want to be community-minded. It's a community, but you're excluding yourself from the community. The same thing, probably going off a tangent here, but with the house, the, what is it called, the middle thing here?
The clubhouse.
The clubhouse, yeah. I mean, if somebody's 55-plus in Bridges of River Mist, can't they get a membership? Just thinking out loud here, to use it. I mean, if they're 40, no, because they're not good to that plus.
Well, I mean, I do kind of understand that though, because that is part of the, that is part and parcel to the product. And so...
I'm talking about being community-minded, I guess.
Yeah, but in all fairness, this is being developed inside and outside of the Bridges of River Mist. I mean, this is a new development, and it's a 55 community. I'm 100% with you on the gates. I'm not sure that I understand that. I think that's a false, it's a security at best, and it's exclusionary at worst. But, you know, to that point, I would like to see you try to continue to negotiate with the community a little bit more. I think some of the requests are reasonable. I think some, maybe not so much. I mean, when was the land agreement on this originally? 97?
You're talking about when it was annexed or zoned? Yeah, 97 was the primary plan approved.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're talking 27 years ago with plans under current conditions, so I don't think anybody can really hold their feet to the fire and say that almost three decades ago, whatever was proposed is still appropriate for this day. So, and, you know, for almost 30 years, everybody's got, you know, been able to look at an open field. Went through the same scenario when we were over in the Knolls, when the hotel was built. You know, people objected to having it there, but, you know, when I bought in that community, I knew it was commercial property. I knew it would eventually develop, and as is this. For the people that are concerned about the traffic and the people that are concerned about just the density overall, I think it is kind of thick, but you're right, 55 and elders don't move around nearly as much. And two, in all fairness, when your property was developed, I'm sure the people that were sitting next door were worried about the fact that you were going to block their view. I mean, it's a subdivision, and it needs to be developed at some point. And so I think progress is good. Again, I would like to see you, you know, perhaps try to address some of the things specifically around the edges in the single-family. The density does concern me a little bit. But, and with regards to protection against 2008, I'm not sure anybody could ever ensure that. So we just cross our fingers. I mean, if that happens again, we're all in a lot more trouble than simply undeveloped areas. But to me, again, the clubhouse decision is something they would have to negotiate, but I get it. It's a privilege of paying the homeowners' associations within the community for 55 and plus people. And then, of course, would you only allow, I mean, even if you could, then you only allow people over 55 to go to the pool. I mean, it just, it's a can of worms that I don't think is fair to ask of the other residents within the community that are paying for that privilege.
Well, they are, I mean, they are also contributing to the overall HOA. So they're paying additional fees for that particular benefit. And I think, I don't see that as being unfair at all, actually. Like everybody else's, I, my concern with the gate was how do they get in, how do they get out? But in truth, I tend to agree. I think it would be a more, more neighborhood-friendly for it to be more open. I don't mind the idea of the single-family in front, because I do think it provides, as you're coming down the street, a sense of continuity for single-family. And then, you know, the condos, the townhouses, the condos are set back a bit. So I do like that. I think it's a beautiful design, I really do. And I do agree with you that the property's been there for, waited to be developed for 30 years, and it's not. You know, you still can look across Bethany from the original phase and go, eh, it's a nice field. And watch people walk their dogs and watch their dogs, you know, fun and make messes and things. So my, one real question comes back to, how do we populate it? I mean, I think you're right, people over 55 do tend to have significantly more available equity to put into a home, buying it in cash or very minimal mortgages. However, you know, do we have that base? You know, we aren't like the villages in Florida where you've got hundreds of thousands of people. Where's that coming from? Where do you see that coming from?
Yeah. Well, it's been, it's been leaving now. I mean, the retirees are moving away. And so, but it is still, the millennials just passed up the baby boomers as far as overall population. However, there's still, there's still a lot of boomers for a long period of time. And so, so it's here. It's, you know, we have people coming this way all the time from the east, you know, but it's also people right in town that are, you know, people don't know where to go. So they're in a two-story, and they can't do stairs well, but there isn't a great, there isn't this available in DeKalb. You know, there isn't a zero-step entry, there isn't a walk-in shower. You know, a community, the entire community is planned for accessibility. Your sidewalks, your driveways, your, every single aspect of the community takes into account safety. So slip and fall is the biggest reason that people, you know, end up in a nursing home. And so when you move to a place that eliminates as many of those hazards as possible, it not only attracts the people to be there, but it also protects the people that move there as well. It's a safer place to live. Back on the association fee, maybe I wasn't clear, but the existing association members pay, you know, about $1,200 a year, $100 a month. Living in the condo community, I've quickly learned that what the fees will be two years from now, the reality is, we don't know. You know, inflation could be 20%, I don't know. But right now, we would anticipate them in the condo community paying an additional $300 on top of that $100. And that services the clubhouse, cuts the grass, plows the snow, budgets for roof maintenance, window maintenance, tuck pointing of the brick, taking care of the streets. So it isn't just like a freebie for whoever wants to stop in. It really is a monumental investment, not only to build, but to take care of it as well.
So I have a comment or a question too about this. So I, I mean, I understand, the name is called The Villas at Bridges of River Mist. So this is part of River Mist. This is, but it seems to me like you're trying to describe an entirely different subdivision built right next to an existing subdivision. And that's kind of where I have some concerns here. You know, the clubhouse, I get. You know, the people that get to live here, they get the extra clubhouse, they get the solo clubhouse. I understand it. I don't understand the gates, I don't understand the private dog park. I understand what Max is saying, where the people that's been making it for 30 years and they had anticipated that houses were coming. And to me, age 55 and over versus single-family, a house is a house, you know, it's going to, it's something that's going to be built there, whether or not you have access to it. But I mean, if I'm living in River Mist right now, and then you're telling me that I can't walk my dog in one part of the neighborhood that's closed off to me, even though it is called River Mist, that's where my concern comes in. So I mean, would you see the people that currently live in River Mist being able to walk their dogs outside around here?
We would be totally open to the River Mist Association taking on the responsibility for the dog park if they're interested in that. It's a, it's a cost, you know, it's a maintenance responsibility. From my perspective, that would be wonderful.
I bet. I can imagine it would be, yeah. I mean, I, look, I have people walking, I'm in, for clarity, I do live in Bridges of River Mist. And, you know, I followed it, I specifically, you know, stayed out of some of this so I could keep an open mind about it, and I do have an open mind about it. But I watch people walk their dogs constantly, and their dogs just poop on my sidewalk, they poop on my thing, and people aren't picking it up. I don't think it'd be any different for that. I do, I don't have an issue with it being called. I see that's a marketing effort. You know, you're promoting it to people 55 and over, and this is a way to promote that. I think that more importantly is that it will contribute to the Bridges of River Mist. And so, you know, I do, I don't support the gate. And Dan, I guess my question is, if this were to pass and go, you know, for the next step, it will come back to us. And at that point, would we be looking at the potential elimination of the gate, or would that have to be put into the motion today?
We can put that in the motion now, tonight.
All right. And Brian, you are not opposed to that, I'm understanding correctly.
No, a gate isn't a deal breaker. They are very common in retirement communities, but, you know, as Maria mentioned, you know, our other communities don't have it. We saw it as a positive. Again, you know, most people's fears are unfounded, but people are always asking me, security, what about security system? How do the locks work? We never have any problems, but it's still, they're overlying a concern of safety, you know? And I think that's just something that I guess is common in a retirement community, retirement thinking. But a gate isn't a requirement. It's a very safe area. You know, it's really just a emotional, it's an emotional thing.
Well, it can always be something that you could always go back to 10 years from now if they want to implement it at that point too, and find out that maybe they do need it.
Yeah. They, you have to build it, and usually it's hard to add things later because then they'd have to all pay, you know, everybody has to pay a thousand dollars or something. And usually, usually that's a tall order later, you know, to collect money. But it does, it does help a little bit on the cost side. I mean, obviously, the cost for the fence goes into every home, so.
Well, to your point, Shannon, I do appreciate that when these people, you know, purchased their homes, they were assuming that they were going to be a single-family next to them. But going back to the point again, that it's undeveloped property for almost 30 years, obviously those plans have to change. And how many permits have been pulled in the last year?
We average about three single-family homes a year in Bridges.
So it would take 100 years at that rate.
I don't have an issue with it being 55 and plus. I have the issue with the gates and being exclusionary from the community that they want to be a part of.
And another thing, I guess, is that the streets are private, you know? So the association takes care of the streets, you know? So different than the Bridges of River Mist, you know, where those are city streets, you know, so there's...
Well, considering how close the street is now, I don't think you're going to have a whole lot of drive-bys of people throwing trash out because they probably wouldn't wander back there even if they knew where it was.
Well, and five people would have called the police within like 10 seconds too, so they're, everyone's home, everybody's there, there's like community place, so.
500 Gladys Cravesses.
Yeah, you can't, you can't get away with anything. So they're, they do watch out for one another, and every, you know, people are more calmly home. And people that move to a retirement community or lifestyle community, they like people, they like to interact, they like to be out, you know, they're people, people, you know?
I will say, I like the idea that single families along the road just to create a continuity between the two neighborhoods.
Yeah.
I think that would be very important, both visually and from a resale value.
Yeah. But thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And did you have any other questions for me?
Just one, there was a question, I think, on why not access to Bethany. Zach can maybe go in there. It's something we're not looking at, to use the internal roadways for access, so. Got any additional?
Right, no additional curb cutter access point would be allowed to Bethany Road for vehicular traffic.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Any other comments, considerations? Are we all in agreement the gate goes?
Yeah.
The gate goes, yeah. The gate goes, yeah.
Any other changes before we read? And obviously, it is coming back to us again.
We can't hear you.
I said, no, I was just asking if there were any other changes before we read.
What's that?
Put the pool.
Put the pool back in? We live in DeKalb, I don't know how much use a pool's going to have. I think the pickleball court's a much better idea.
I think that was on my part, misreading the plan. I thought I saw a pool there, and I'm sure there wasn't, so. It was a pickleball court, so. Maybe there'll be one in the future, but.
Okay. If nothing else, I will ask for a motion to approve.
Okay. I'll put it forward because I did make the revision. Based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to City Council approval of an amendment to the preliminary plan in ordinance 97-36 and 97-37 to allow the construction of 55 and over age-restricted residential development on the subject site consisting of a maximum of 22 single-family detached homes, 19 six-unit townhouses, 22 four-unit townhouses, a clubhouse and accessory uses, with the revision that the entry gates be eliminated from the site plan. Approval is also recommended for a preliminary plan dated 118-24 and labeled as Exhibit A, architectural and elevation, labeled as Exhibit B, and subject to the standards and conditions listed in Exhibit C.
So moved by Becker. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stoker. May I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
Can you grab him?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. We have a staff report for next week? Or next meeting, I should say.
Let the room clear here.
I don't think that's their call. That's why I said you don't want to talk to you here.
I live on the other side, so I'm safe.
And I believe half of those people in Bridges are probably coming from there now.
I, you know, I...
I know, he's kind of, I know, so I don't want to point him at him.
I just also think the people living out in Larkin, seeing that giant gate across the street.
Me, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure you're protected.
Right. Why, and I know, I was just talking about that, we're going to go to my cousin's, they live, you know, those, the house is right in the middle.
Oh, yeah, where?
There's all kinds of communities everywhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And they have access to the entire community.
Now, that would make more sense to me. And the 55-plus.
I was expecting to be here until nine, Shannon.
It's going to come back to us, I mean, you guys, it's going to come back to us.
I suppose particularly, it's a used old house, you have to send it down.
Yeah, very cool.
Clearly, it's busy, it's really on fire.
The way the tables are arranged.
Truly, I don't, just for the other communities that he's built, you're not going to, unless you're concerned about the swoop here. about the school, you know, they're only...
I know, that's, uh, fences, I saw, uh, we just love this, uh, I guess, we need to, I need to...
In River Mist though, but it's blocking River Mist. I mean, you're, it's, I would get it if the gate was on Bethany.
I'm sorry?
That happens everywhere, right? So, I'm, I don't have a gate to my community, you don't have a gate to your community right now, you don't, so why would they, what, what is going to make them go over there?
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, I know, no, let me, I gotta think about it, I gotta think about it for the next time, or when it comes...
Okay, can we get back to, can we go to the staff report real quick, Dan?
Yeah, just quick, uh, you're good, thanks, Zach. Um, next meeting, March eighteenth, um, got a concept plan for a solar farm on Route thirty-eight, uh, west of the city, not in the city, but contiguous. It's a concept plan or sketch plan, so no official vote, just feedback from the commission on that, to give them direction if they should proceed with annexation and development, or development in the county perhaps, so. That'll be on the eighteenth, the one item. At the last council meeting on February twenty-sixth, they approved the rezoning and special use permit for the school district for the transition program, a five-thirty charter. Uh, during the discussion, they, uh, the aldermen did ask for additional, uh, privacy fence on the east and west sides of it, the slats and that, we just required along the south side next to that adjoining resident. Uh, so they're gonna add additional privacy fencing on the two sides, so it'll be additional higher, but they did approve it unanimously, so, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Dan, as a, a question, um, the next couple meetings, because I'm involved in, with the theater, the next production, I'm, I'm in it, um, and we start rehearsals at six-thirty. If, if for some reason, um, as long as we have a, a quorum, if I have to duck out at six forty-five, if it goes long, is that, would that present a problem?
Yeah, that's...
Absolutely not, you're staying here until the bitter end.
What's that?
I said absolutely not, you're staying here until the bitter end.
Okay.[1752.52][1752.55][laughing] Well, we...
As long as we have four remaining, once you leave that, that's great, yeah, you can do that, that's fine.
As long as I keep my mouth shut, we're, we're able to get out of here fast.
Just give a heads up ahead of time when you might be doing...
Okay.
As you never said anything, we would've assumed you were the rest of the...
That's right.[1768.11][1768.14][laughing] Which I need to. There you go.
Okay, if that is all, uh, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move, Stoker.
Moved by Stoker, may I have a second, please?
I second.
Seconded by Pena Graham, ball of papers, say aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
All right. I'm gonna have people in my neighborhood.